We must be on our one-minute warning.
The broadcast of the regular meeting of the Minneapolis City Council will now begin.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Lisa Bender. I'm the president of the Minneapolis City Council. I'm going to call to order this regular meeting for Friday, February 12th. Proceed, I'll note that we have remote participation by council members and city staff as authorized under the provisions of Open Meeting Law, Section 13D.021, due to the declared state of local public health emergency. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll to verify the presence of a quorum.
Councilmember Conno. Councilmember Reich.
Here.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Here.
Councilmember Schrader.
Here.
Councilmember Osman.
Here.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Present.
Councilmember Ellison.
Present.
Councilmember Goodman.
Present.
Councilmember Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Present.
Councilmember Gordon.
Here.
Councilmember Conno.
Present.
Vice President Jenkins.
Here.
President Bender.
Here.
There are 13 members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. Colleagues, the agenda is before us. Are there any amendments to the agenda today? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Clerk, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Conno.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the agenda is adopted. Next, we have the minutes from our regular meeting on January 29th for acceptance. May I have a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Conno.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and those minutes are accepted. Next, we have the referrals, petitions, communications, and reports to the proper committees. May I have that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Conno.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and those matters are referred. As we open our meeting today, as we are for each meeting during Black History Month, we'll be sharing important facts at the beginning of each meeting to ground ourselves in Black history during the month of February. So on this day in Black history, in 1909, 112 years ago, on the anniversary of President Lincoln's birthday, the National Association for the Advancement of Color People, called the NAACP, was founded. The organization was established in response to the brutal race massacre in Springfield, Illinois, in August of the previous year, when a white mob ransacked black neighborhoods, burned businesses, and lynched two black men and injured dozens of others. Organizers and advocates worked in the aftermath of that tragedy, and six months later, on February 12th, 1909, the NAACP was officially founded in New York. The original 60 founding members included several prominent black community leaders, including W.E.B. Du Bois, Ida B. Wells, and Mary Church Terrell. Its principal objective was to ensure the political, educational, social, and economic equality of minority groups in the United States, and to work toward the elimination of racial bias and prejudice. That is the work that continues to drive the NAACP and so many other partners and advocacy groups to this day, groups that push us all at the city of Minneapolis to do our best to achieve the goals that were set out so many years ago. With that, we will turn to our usual order of business. Under new business, we will begin with the mayor's regular report about the state of our local health emergency addressing the city's response to COVID-19. Welcome, Mayor Frye.
Madam President, this is Casey. I'm sorry to report, we don't have the mayor on the meeting or on the call at this point.
Okay. I assume someone will reach out to the mayor's office to see if the mayor will be joining us for the regular report.
I might suggest that we move on to reports, and we can bring up the new business at the end of the agenda.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Carl. That was my plan as well. So the next order of business will be reports from our standing committees. We'll begin with a report from the Business Inspections, Housing and Zoning Committee, presented by the chair, Councilmember Goodman.
Good morning, Madam President. Members of the council, the Business Inspections, Housing and Zoning Committee is bringing 15 items forward for approval this morning. Item number one is a land sale. Item number two is granting an appeal with regard to a demolition at 21 Washington Avenue North, and I will note the findings of fact have been submitted as well. Item number three is the liquor license approvals, and four is the liquor license renewals. Item five is a grant application to deed for youth employment training services. Item six is property management for the Upper Harbor Terminal. Item seven is a bid to demolish debris at 810 East Lake Street, and as is number 11, is a bid to demolish debris at 2941 Chicago Avenue. Item nine is a policy for waiving the assessments related to properties damaged during the 2020 declared local emergency. Item number 10 is a contract amendment with Ryan and the Sports Facilities Commission on the parking agreement at Downtown East. Item number 11 is a contract amendment with e-recording partners with regard to real estate records and the Hennepin County Recorder's Office. Item 12 is a utility easement at the University of Minnesota. 13 is a rezoning at 2014 Washington Avenue North. Item 14 is a rezoning on Minnehaha Avenue at 46th, and item number 15 is a rezoning at 636 22nd Avenue Northeast. With that, Madam President, I'd like to move items 1 through 15 for approval this morning.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman has moved the committee report. I'll note that Mayor Frye is here, so we'll be able to return to the new business item after we finish the biz agenda. Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to thank Councilmember Goodman and my colleagues on this committee for your deliberation on number two. This generated a lot of interest, obviously, in Ward Three, and I think you arrived at the right conclusion. I'm happy to support your recommendation.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I think the chair noted this, but just to make sure for the record, that item two includes findings of fact that have been provided by the city attorney's office to all council members via email. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Conno.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and that report is adopted. With that, we'll return back to the item of new business, which is the mayor's report on the state of the local public health emergency. Welcome, Mayor Frye.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for the opportunity to join you today. I'll jump right into the report. We've had 21 emergency regulations to date. Many of them have been adopted, followed by rescission in some form. The total approximate number of completed tests thus far has been 6,871,077. For Minnesota case information, it's a total positive tests have been 470,803. I'll skip down to hospitalizations right now, as all of you have the report. Total cases hospitalized have been 24,989 cumulatively, and the total cases hospitalized in ICU is 5,168. In Minneapolis specifically, the total positive cases have been 32,097, 2,235 hospitalized, and tragically 383 deceased. There is some Minneapolis demographic information that certainly we're happy to answer any questions about that should be there in your report. And I'll note that the total number, moving to the Health Department and situational update, the total number of cases has increased by 1.1% over the last week. Both hospitalizations and ICU admissions increased by less than 1% as well. For the most part, what we've seen is sort of a stagnation of the number of cases that are coming in, at least per 100,000, and at times even a decline. But over the last week, there have been about 50 new cases per day on average, and this rate has decreased significantly, as I mentioned. However, we're still seeing at least 10 new cases per day, as well as averaging three hospitalizations and one death per day. So we're still very much in the high-risk category, yet the trajectory has consistently been either stable and/or downward. Part of that, we believe, is because there's been lower levels of testing. As for contact tracing, the Health Department continues to conduct follow-up with individuals diagnosed with COVID. Of the cases in Minneapolis, 65% have been interviewed, and 2.4% have refused. 32% of cases have been lost to follow-up in some form, with less than 1% of new Minneapolis cases still need to be interviewed. 20% of interviews for Minneapolis residents have been conducted in languages other than English. For COVID vaccination, the Health Department continues to partner with Hennepin Healthcare to vaccinate Phase 1A priority groups in Minneapolis. And to date, they have hosted 32 vaccination clinics and given out approximately 2,700 vaccinations. This week, the Health Department is hosting 10 clinics for assisted living facilities, blue and white taxi drivers, Minneapolis Park Police, school health staff, and other congregant care facilities. MHD is finalizing plans for vaccinating Phase 1B populations with an emphasis on BIPOC communities who have been disproportionately impacted by COVID-19, as well as vulnerable adults living in public housing. As you know, the ability to be vaccinated has gone to our first responders as part of that original, that first or second phase. The state continues to focus on vaccinating adults over 65, educators, and childcare workers as well. For COVID testing, MHD continues to offer regular community testing events, which are free and open to everyone. In the past week, the Health Department provided 132 COVID-19 saliva tests at two community events and local businesses. Moving down to support for MPS, about 2,600 MPS educators are preparing to welcome approximately 9,600 elementary school students back in-person learning this month, and MHD is conducting case investigation and contact tracing for MPS staff diagnosed, exposed, or experiencing symptoms. MHD has provided 1,200 saliva test kits for MPS educators, as well as 700 tests for MPS students and families. I'm going to move on to procurement. As of February 10th, 2021, there has been 9,180,292 spent. There was no increase in spending since our last report, and as I always do, I'll note that the total costs that we are experiencing, as well as the losses of revenue, far exceed the amounts that are listed here, and far exceed the amount that are included in any of these emergency purchases reports. For state and federal activity, activity at the Minnesota House and Senate continues to gain momentum as committees move from informational overviews to the hearing of bills. There's a number of bills that are presently working their way through. We have very high hopes to getting a whole lot of money in a likely, very quickly, very quick manner. A big part of our task is ultimately going to be to allocate that money to those that need it most, and for our most important foundational city services. HF428, for example, would appropriate 20 million to the local public health grant fund. HF21 would appropriate 25 million to emergency shelters, and this is for the state. HF42 would appropriate 17.5 million for emergency service grants. Those are a few examples. As for the federal update, the negotiations between the Biden Administration, House, and Senate leadership continue on a fifth round of stimulus that includes proposed relief payments to state and local governments. The proposed language states that funds would be available until expended, awarded directly from Treasury within 60 days of enactment, and subject to eligible uses, including to replace revenue lost, delayed, or decreased as a result of the pandemic. Obviously, that segment would be incredibly important for our city, given that we have lost a pretty extraordinary amount of revenue. For the federal emergency rental assistance program, the city is collaborating closely with Hennepin County, and St. Paul, and Ramsey County, Minnesota Housing, and several other jurisdictions, as we begin receiving the direct allocation in hopes of streamlining the administration and ensuring consistency in service delivery across jurisdictions. This is a little bit of what I was explaining before. In other words, we're going to be getting a bunch of money, and we need to be able to allocate it as quickly as possible. Not a lot has changed in terms of the gap funding package, and so I'm not going to read through that again. As for the forgivable loan program, all 173 small businesses have been awarded. And with that, thank you for your time. I realize that was a quick overview, but I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
I was on mute. My apologies. I see there is a question for the mayor from Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to go back to, you went over this pretty briefly, Mr. Mayor, but this is just on MPD. You did, there were some changes I saw about the hiring process, and I did want to ask when we would hear more about other changes, other changes about discipline process and other things. I mean, I think it is, it's good to see that there have been some changes in the hiring, but as we, you know, all, well, actually, everyone in the world watched the video of former Officer Chauvin murdering George Floyd, there were clear failures in discipline and other issues. I'd love to hear when we are going to hear updates on when will changes in process are then, are being made.
Madam President, Councilmember Schrader, that question doesn't pertain to what this report is about. I'll answer in basic form, which is that we have issued a series of changes over even just the last month. Those changes have ranged from embedding our city attorney and our local processes to, yes, having a heightened vantage point of the disciplinary process itself, to just yesterday, we announced changes in how we're going to be doing recruitment and evaluation of the skill sets that individuals entering the recruiting class will hopefully have. You know, that the disciplinary process has, we have been working through it, but this is not the topic of that particular report.
I understand that, Mayor. It's something with, and I'm happy to hear about those changes, but let's get something on the schedule for the Public Health and Safety Committee or the POGO Committee. It is just something that, those are very severe issues, that I'm not bringing this up because we, just because of the multiple kind of stories that have come up asking what the city has done, I'm bringing this up because I continue to hear this from my constituents. They want to know what is being done on discipline after they've seen big failures in that, and they want to know what is going to be, when they're going to see changes, because it really comes down to what are we doing to make sure something like George Floyd never happens again? And while these are, you know, we're seeing some advancements very slowly, constituents just want to know that they're going to be safe, and that they have a police force that can do that, can keep everyone safe and treat everyone with respect. And also, I'll just, I will also add, I've been trying to get a meeting with the chief, you know, I've had dozens of requests, and I've had one meeting with the chief back last summer, and it was on this. I requested that meeting, and the chief granted it, on the video where we saw officers pepper-spraying diesel protesters out of a car that was driving by. As far as I know, nothing has happened on that. At the time, I was pushing, I want to know what is happening right now, and was told by the chief, as well as multiple staff, you know, that they don't really have a process for anything until there is a complaint and until there's litigation. That's unacceptable. If we're serious about discipline and changing things, we need to see things happen proactively. That's not happening. That's, that was months ago, and that's why I continue to try and have a meeting with the chief. So I, this is serious. I would like to know, you know, if not here, then when and where will we hear more about it?
Okay, thank you for those questions and comments, Councilmember Schrader. It sounds like the mayor has, Mayor, did you have anything more to add about that?
So we've reached out to Councilmember Schrader several times, and there have been instances when he hasn't actually asked any additional questions when we've been able to provide the answers. Some of those answers have legal requirements where we aren't able to disclose in public. He knows that. We're certainly able to have reports out. This particular chief has reported out more to this city council than any chief before. We're happy to continue doing that, to the extent the chief has time. He is a very busy person, but if he's able to, certainly, we are able, willing to provide that, any additional information requested. There are many investigations that are happening right now regarding disciplinary process over the summer. I can't comment further on that due to legal reasons. And as I've stated several, in several instances and emails to Councilmember Schrader, if there are questions that you have specifically, please ask them. We are happy to answer them, even if we aren't able to answer them in public form for legal reasons.
Madam Chair, if I could follow up, yes, that has been the process. I have asked very publicly for answers. I've asked privately for answers. I am being very, trying to be very clear right now. I have not gotten answers. The public has not gotten answers. I understand that we can't, some of this cannot be private, and that's why way back last summer, I asked for a private meeting. I offered that up. Let's have that with the city attorney and with the chief. This is something, we are, we are all trying for the same thing. We all want to do better for the citizens of Minneapolis, and we need to, we need to do that. And I finally got a meeting with the chief and the city attorney scheduled for next week, and that has been canceled as well. This has gone on way too long. We need to find something, and we need to do better.
Madam President, Councilmember Schrader, I can't speak to this particular meeting that you had scheduled with the city attorney and the chief. I don't know their reasons for canceling that particular meeting, but I'm, I mean, I'm happy to follow up.
Okay, thank you both. And I think I'll just, you know, take the point that I think Councilmember Schrader is asking for some public communications for constituents rather than private communications for council members. Anything further from council members on the mayor's report? Seeing none. Thank you, Mayor. We will return back to the committee reports. I will direct the clerk to file this report. The next report is from the Policy and Government Oversight Committee, presented by the chair, Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. The Policy and Government Oversight Committee brings forward 14 items today. Item number one is an ordinance amending Title II, Chapter 41 of the Minneapolis Code of Ordinances relating to administration, information governance, adding a new article titled Facial Recognition Technology. Item number two authorizes an amendment to the City of Minneapolis Minflex Plan. Item number three is various appointments to the Transgender Equity Council. Items four through six are various legal settlements, the details of which are listed on the agenda. Items seven through nine are various contract amendments relating to the public service building project. Those details are listed on the agenda. Item number 10 is a contract amendment with WOLD Architects and Engineers for the fire stations number four and eight improvement projects. Item number 11 is a contract amendment with West Publishing Corporation for online research services. Item number 12 authorizes an increase to a contract with the Standard Insurance Company for Employee Life and Disability Insurance and Lead Management Services. Item number, item number 13 authorizes a one-year contract with Hiller Heinst LLC to provide an after-action report, review, and report on the response to the civil unrest associated with the death of George Floyd. Item number 14 is a resolution amending the 2020, 2021 wage freeze. Madam President, I move approval of the Policy and Government Oversight Committee's report.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The chair has moved to the report. Is there any discussion on that committee report? Seeing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Conno.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next, we have the report from the Public Health and Safety Committee, given by the chair, Councilmember Cunningham.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Madam President. The Public Health and Safety Committee is bringing forward three items for approval today. The first item is directing staff in the Labor Standards Division of the Civil Rights Department to work, to do an area of focus on downtown workers' outreach related to returning to work after the COVID-19, or during, I suppose, the COVID-19 pandemic. Item number two is accepting an additional grant funding in the amount of $75,000 from the CDC for youth violence prevention efforts. And item number three is passage of a resolution appropriating for 2021 from the Public Safety Staffing Reserve to the Police Department to fund two additional hiring training classes and the Community Service Officers Program. I will move all three items for approval.
Councilmember Cunningham has moved their committee report. Is there any discussion about the committee report? Seeing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Conno.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Finally, we have the report from the Transportation and Public Works Committee, given by the chair, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forwards 26 items today for full council consideration. Item one is the 17th Avenue Northeast and Northeast River Ridge Street Resurfacing Project. Item two is the 54th Street East Resurfacing Project. Three is the contract amendment with PCI Roads LLC for First Street North Over Bassett Creek Tunnel Repair Project. Four is the contract amendment. Four is the contract amendment with Custom Products and Services for Street Skate Maintenance and Services for Special Service Districts. Five is the grant application for MINDAT for 2021 Local Road Improvement Program. Six is the I-35W Solutions Alliance Joint Powers Agreement. Items seven through 21 are a series of appointments for our various special service districts. All participants are listed. And item 22 is the Osseo Road Street Reconstruction Project Layout Approval. 23 is the bid for the traffic marking thermoplastic material. 24 is the bid for Hennepin Avenue Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project. Item 25 is the bid for the Fourth Street North-South Street Reconstruction Project. And 26 was our Green Street, our Green Fleet Policy Update. Lot of discussion around that, and we submit that for approval as well. Madam President, I submit all items as for approval.
Thank you. Councilmember Reich has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to take a moment to highlight item number 22, the Osseo Road Street Reconstruction. I just wanted to say how excited I am about this project. Osseo Road right now is a very dangerous road in Ward 4. There are many, many crashes that happened along this road, particularly at the intersection of Osseo and Penn Avenue. So I'm very grateful and excited. So I want to thank city staff for all of their hard work related to this, particularly Kelsey Ford, for all of their work, really doing a lot of community engagement with the Victory Neighbors, and engagement with me. We've really dug into it because we, we want to make this intersection safer. It's one of the very few commercial nodes that we have in Ward 4, so it is quite an issue that we have so many cars crashing into businesses along the, this, this particular stretch. We've had five cars crash into one restaurant on that corner in three years. So I'm really excited that we're moving forward with the reconstruction of this particular road so that we can make it safer for pedestrians, for bicyclists, for businesses, so that we can actually have a safe, walkable corridor node right there on 44th Penn and Osseo where all of those meet. So thank you so much. Thank you to the staff, and I am grateful for all of their work.
Thank you, Councilmember. Is there any further discussion on the Transportation and Public Works Report? Seeing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Conno.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham. Councilmember Allison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins. President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. The next order of business is reports from special committees, and we have one item referred to us from the executive committee. I'll recognize Council Vice President Jenkins for that report.
Thank you once again, Madam President. The Executive Committee brings forward one item today, which is the appointment of Andrea Brennan as the Director of the Community Planning and Economic Development Department. I move to receive and file the appointment by the Executive Committee and move to refer the nomination to the Business Inspections, Housing and Zoning Committee for the setting of a public hearing.
Council Vice President has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Conno. Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Allison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Conno.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins. President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and that item is referred. Mr. Clerk, you know, sometimes we have some, some, we've had some procedural questions about department head appointments in the past, so I'll just clarify that this is sending this item to the biz committee for, and then at the committee. The public hearing would be set usually for the following cycle, so I think my calculation was that this would be anticipated to be at the biz committee back for a public hearing in two cycles, which I think would be March 2nd.
Madam President, you're correct.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So that item is referred. Did I call the roll? Yes, thank you, Mr. Clerk. I thought I did, but we've called the roll a number of times. Okay, so that is adopted, referred, and we'll go to the biz committee. The next order of business is the introduction and referral calendar. We have two ordinances for introduction today, both from Councilmember Goodman. First, Councilmember Goodman moves to introduce, give first reading and refer to the Business Inspections, Housing and Zoning Committee, the subject matter of an ordinance that provides new and amended provisions related to administrative hearing procedures. Second, Councilmember Goodman moves to introduce, give first reading and refer to the Business Inspections, Housing and Zoning Committee, the subject matter of an ordinance that provides new and amended provisions related to lifetime license applications and rabies procedures. Are there any questions about either of those ordinances? Seeing none. Clerk will call the roll on those introductions.
Councilmember Conno.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher. Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham. Councilmember Allison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and those ordinances have been introduced, and they will be referred to the biz committee in the next cycle. Finally, we have the order of announcements. Are there any announcements this morning? Mr. Carl.
Madam President, I need to bring forward an item that was already introduced, given first reading and referred to the Public Health and Safety Committee in the previous cycle. There is a proposed amendment to the charter that's been introduced and has been referred for public hearing in the next cycle. That notice that was given related to that proposed amendment indicated that the changes into the city charter would relate to Article VII. The city attorney's office, who has been working to complete the drafting of that ordinance, indicates there also are changes required into Article VIII. Therefore, the notice needs to be amended by unanimous consent to say that the proposal would make changes into Article VII and into Article VIII. This, of course, relates to the proposal to create a new public safety department. That has been first noticed back in January and was, as I mentioned, last cycle formally introduced, given first reading and referred to the Public Health and Safety Committee for the setting of a public hearing. So I believe the technical crew has put in front of you a motion. We've just on the fly put this together in the clerk's office, proposing that the notice that had been given previously on this proposal be amended to include the provision related to changes in Article VIII of the charter so that we can continue that along the same timeline.
Thank you, Mr. Carl. Is there any? I suppose we need a motion to, to have this before us. I will move.
Madam President, I'm assuming because this already has been introduced, and so the clerks made the assumption that the co-authors Cunningham, Fletcher, Schrader are moving this.
Sure.
And so I would assume that motion's been made?
Sure. Yeah, and for official purposes, I'll, I'll move it on behalf of the authors. I see Councilmember Cunningham. Thank you, Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. So this, this addition is a little bit, it's not a big deal. It's a, it's a couple of lines being crossed out, and I don't know if we have the language that can actually be, actually be shown here, but I just want folks to be able to understand that the police chief under the language that we have will not serve a term, but instead will work, will be appointed at the pleasure and serve at the pleasure of the Commissioner of the Department of Public Safety. So that is clarified in Section 8. So just wanted to clarify that, okay, so we are, currently don't have the language, according to the clerk. So, so just to clarify, the chief will no longer, police chief under the Department of Public Safety will no longer have a term, but instead will be appointed and serve at the pleasure of the Public Safety Department Commissioner. So that is what's being clarified in Chapter 8 of the, of the charter. So it, this is just to be able to add that in so we can have that aligned and cleaned up in, on both sides. So this was something that the city attorneys helped us locate in, in our continuing process of fleshing this work out. So I do ask for folks' support for this today, just so we can make sure we have it concise and both of the pieces working together. Thank you.
Madam President, I might be able to just elaborate on what Councilmember Cunningham said. I don't have the language, but just for clarity around what's being proposed and for the public who are listening in, the charter, as we all know, provides under Article VII for administration, which is where the charter departments are listed. And so the original notice pertained to that section in Article VII, which is 7.3, which deals with the police department. There are, however, specific to the police chief under Article VIII, which deals with appointments of officers and elected officials, details about the term, and that's specifically because, unlike other charter department heads, the chief of police is appointed to a three-year term, not a two-year term. And so there are specific sections within Article VIII that reference the police chief's term, and those would need to be struck if the police department is also struck. So there are corollary provisions within the charter, but they do not change the underlying intent in terms of what was proposed originally by the council members offering this. This is a more technical cleanup that allows us to also remove those provisions specific to the police chief's term and appointment, separate from the department itself. So I hope that helped to clarify a little bit to what Councilmember Cunningham provided as a good explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Carl. Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, Council President. Just, just want to emphasize, this was a last-minute catch by the city attorney, and this vote today is not a vote in support of the amendment. This vote today is not a vote in support of forwarding it to the Charter Commission. This vote is just a technical cleanup vote, and I hope you'll all support it so we can move this forward.
Thank you. I put myself in queue with just a clarifying question. So when we, when we do the introduction, you know, an important piece of a charter amendment is to focus in which, which part of the charter we're referring to. And so I just want to clarify my understanding, which is that as we go through the process for any charter amendment that's initiated by the city council, we have a public hearing, we get feedback, there's an opportunity for council members to amend proposed language. So all of those things would be happening for any charter amendment initiated by the city council through this process between introduction and when the final vote would come to forward language. The reason that this needs to be changed at this time in this way is because it's referring to a different article within the charter. Is that correct, Mr. Clerk? That's the part that can't be changed as we go through that process.
Yes, Madam President, you have that correct.
I mean, I'll note that the original introduction did not pass unanimously. What, what happens if this does not pass unanimously today?
We would hold over to the next cycle and introduce it as an amendment to a prior action, and, and then the council by that vote could move that forward.
Is there any other questions or discussions on this motion? Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam President. I, this question is germane to the topic, but has there been language posted for this charter amendment yet? If so, it wasn't available as of 4:00 PM yesterday. And there's a public hearing on this, that the Public Safety Committee hit, set for next week, less than a week away. Do we have ordinance language for the public to see so that they can react to such a charter amendment?
I think either the authors or the clerk could answer that question. I see Councilmember Cunningham.
I will also just give space to the clerk if there is, if there are more specifics, but I do believe that the language should be posted today. It was submitted yesterday.
Anything further from anyone on that? Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Conno.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Allison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
No.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
No.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes and 2 nays.
And so since that required unanimous consent, that is not, does not prevail. I see a couple of council members in queue with questions or comments. Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have a question for the clerk. In regards to the timetable with the Charter Commission, does the delay one cycle push this out beyond what is necessary?
Madam President, to Councilmember Schrader's question, I'm not certain right now, as I sit here in the council chamber. I do have a timetable, as you know, that provides detailed times and key dates, and I'm happy to go back and update that to show that this item would be added as an item of new business to the next council agenda and recalculate that timeline and send it out to all council members.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Clerk. My understanding is that it does, and so I just want to be very clear that the vote today and the vote on this very technical change to make sure that what we put for voters is as accurate and the best policy that it can be, will stop that process. It will stop voters in Minneapolis from have, seeing this. So my concern is if the Charter Commission takes its full time, this will not be on the ballot because of a very technical behind-the-scenes vote, and I just want to make sure that that is public and very clear.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to also just say that a no vote on this really has no bearing in terms of it actually, like, we are still going to have a public hearing on this on Thursday at the Public Health and Safety Committee. We have already begun the process, and so a no vote is pretty much just signaling not supporting the overall sentiment of the charter rather than not supporting the technical aspect of this fix that we were looking to do, that the city attorney's office found while we were doing our due diligence. So this is an opportunity to be able to signal something that ultimately will lead to poorer governing because of the fact that they're not aligned, and we are still moving forward. So this was an opportunity to be able to use a technical change that needed to happen to be able to stop voters from being able to participate in restructuring the public safety system in our city, which is what people have asked for. I am I am very disappointed that this was used as an opportunity to be able to signal people's stance on the sentiment of the amendment rather than allowing a democratic process to move forward based on a technicality. This is cleaning up language around the term of the chief. You voted no against that? Like, that's what I don't fully understand. So I just wanted to name that for the public because I am very frustrated that this was used as an opportunity to make a political signal rather than actually base it on facts and governing. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. As I do with all business before the council, I will happily follow up with the city attorney and clerks and the authors of this to sort out the next steps and make sure that we have a good plan in place to communicate the next steps that some of the councilmembers just enumerated. Any further announcements? Seeing none, we have completed all of the items on our agenda. Without objection, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you all, and have a good weekend.